We will now call to order the meeting of the Muskogee Municipal Authority for February 27, 2023. Let me start this meeting by inviting all of our members of our community and surrounding areas to please participate in the regional livestock show happening all week at the Hat Box Arena here in Muskogee, Oklahoma. Each year, particularly this year in particular, we have over 2,000 visitors with 820 people actually participating in the event. Ninety-six percent of those are outside of Muskogee and Hildale, St. Joseph's Public Schools and private school respectively. Corporate and small business sponsorships are nearly $80,000. It's a wonderful event at Hat Box, and we're happy to host it every year. We're looking forward to many, many more years of the regional livestock show being held in Muskogee, Oklahoma. We're going to now have the invocation followed by the flag salute. Let us stand. Lord, we thank you for this day. We pray your blessing, oh God, upon us that we are led and governed by your Holy Spirit. Father, give us the mind that we need to take care of business for your taxpayers. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Let's look to the flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Jones.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Who's. Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Thank you. Item number one.
Consider approval of MMA minutes of January 23, 2023, or take other necessary action.
The minutes appear not packing on tonight. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Or do we have a motion?
No for approval.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second on item number one. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item number two.
Consider approval of MMA claims for the month ending January 31, 2023, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, you have before you the claims for the month. You will see that it does have the retention for capital projects that help a lot of the major infrastructure developments that you see going on across town. We do recommend approval. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any discussion on the claims? Do we have a motion to proceed?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the claims. Further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Jones. Alex Reynolds. Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. That meeting is adjourned. We will now call to order the meeting of Muskogee Redevelopment Authority for February 27, 2023. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Jones.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Who's. Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Thank you. Item number one.
Consider approval of MRA minutes of January 23, 2023, or take other necessary action.
The said minutes appearing are packing on tonight. Do we have any corrections to the minutes or the motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number one. Further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item number two.
Consider approval of MRA claims for January 14, 2023, through February 17, 2023, or take other necessary action.
The claims appearing are packing on tonight. Do we have any discussion or questions about the claims? Do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
A second.
We have a motion and a second on the claims that appear in the packet. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item number three.
Receive report on Civic Center operations and take other necessary action.
Mr. Cruz.
Good evening, council, mayor, city management. Thanks for allowing me to do a Civic Center update today. We have a presentation in front of you. I think Michael's going to play it also here. Let's go over our numbers for the fiscal year.
The clicker is right there if you want to advance the slides.
There you go. So first slide is the revenue sources for the Civic Center. These are our main. We do have others. Right now, we are on track to probably have the best revenue year for the Civic Center. It comes with a lot of work. We've been working on it for a few years now. Our beer and concession sales are pretty high right now. We're probably going to surpass our revenue numbers. This comes with public events. So every time we do a public event, we increase our opportunity to make revenue on beer and food. So it is very important that we continue to work on public events so we can increase our revenue lines and we can continue to provide a service to our community. On our next slide, some news. We extended. For a couple of years, we didn't have a Jehovah Witness. They usually do the conventions at the Civic Center. We're talking about six dates a year. We were able to, during COVID, they were gone for two years. We just sit back and we're going to have the convention back at the Civic Center. And we signed agreements all the way to 2025. So we're going to have them for about 15 dates. They would like to increase and do other conventions at the Civic Center. We work pretty well together. We like them. They cleaned the facility. It's really good for us, too. So we're happy to have them back. We added new conventions and seminars. From Oklahoma City, we're getting the On-Side Waterways Convention. We did it last year. They want to come back. They love it. Same thing with Bermuda Equipment Training. They were looking for a spot. They found the Civic Center. They want to do it every year at the Civic Center. It's a great group. They're not from here. They come from all over the states. And then the K-12 testing, we had it last year, and they're coming back to the Civic Center. So we are seeing new clients just to increase our rentals. We're working on the Cinco de Mayo Festival with the Bull Riders. We did it last year. It was beautiful. We want to do it again, probably make it even bigger. We're working on a partnership with Tourism and the Hall of Fame for the next induction ceremony. I cannot say the names, but we're close to a deal, so we'll be making announcements hopefully shortly. And we hope it's just as successful as the Turn Back Two with our concert. We're hosting our first robotic competition. Thanks to Councilman Stout. He brought this to our Civic Center. And it's the first time we're hosting such an event. Hopefully, everyone will see that it's very easy to do at the Civic Center, and we'll continue to get events like this throughout the state. And we are back into the touring from Christmas in Kearney. If you guys got to see this event a couple of years ago, it was great. I got a call this week. They want us back in their touring. So we will be in that touring again for this Christmas. Going to the next slide. We're talking about our facility. Our biggest problem for many years has been the HBAC. City Muskogee, city management's been working with us, trying to get an RFP to replace our trailers and our boilers. I would like to also ask my executive team if I could please get an approval to get some quotes for the floor, the arena floor, the concrete. We would like to either repair it, stain it. At this point, it's starting to be in really bad shape, so I would like to get some quotes if it's allowed by my executive team. Also for indoor painting, and we need to replace our carpet for Room A and B on the first floor. So if we can probably do that, if I can get approvals for that, please let me know. Next subject on facility is the marquee. It's been broken for a while. We just need to work, really work really hard, either getting it replaced or repair it. We're downtown. Our events can go in that marquee. I think people for years were used to just walk by and see the marquee and at least get an idea when the events at the Civic Center were happening. Budget. I know I sound like a broken record when it comes down to the budget items. There were items that were not on my budget this year that still, I met with city management recently, that affects our budget, which is like the basketball court repairs. HBAC, we had to replace a compressor. We have the tax bonus that came out of our budget, too. That was not an item that was on our budget line. So I really would like for you guys to take a look at this and consider it. Because it does affect. Every time I use money that is rollover money that I use it for other items, that means that it's a public event that we can be hosting, and we're using the money for something else. So just take that into consideration, please. Other expenses we have, of course, is the increase of utilities. Right now, for up to December, we were 20,000 over our utilities from the previous years. Again, another big expense that we're not counting on. Wish list. Set a few items there in a wish list that if at one point, either this fiscal year and next fiscal year, we can get to the Civic Center. I would like to bring to the attention the cameras. I know we talked about this in the past. We do need security cameras at the Civic Center. It would definitely help us. Especially with public events, there's a lot going on at the building. We're a very small crew, and liability is everywhere. So if we can get priorities on camera, security system, that would be really good. And our challenges. We talk about the HBAC system is something we cannot control. If there's anyone out there, if you ask a review from any client, what's the problem at the Civic Center, everyone's going to say, it's either too cold or too hot. We can't control it. So the moment we get to control that, that's going to help with our clients and one of our biggest headaches. Of course, temporary staff. We run into problems that we ask for staff for public events, or either for when we have a heavy day, but we never get the staff that we ask for. We ask for 15, we get 10. We ask for 10, we get 5. What that does is increase our overtime, because now our guys are going to have to get out of their duties to go take care of something else. So that's one of our challenges. And then, of course, that creates problems with customer service. I've seen how people complain about somebody in concessions. Well, unfortunately, we have to continue to try and get different staff to work a concession, and then maybe it's a new, one public event, we have a crew, and the next public event, we get somebody else. So that's kind of a challenge that we have at the Civic Center. Finally, up to right now, this fiscal year, we've served over 35,000 guests. Hopefully, we'll get back to prior to COVID. In 2019, we served 90,000 people. So we're hoping that this fiscal year, we get close to it, and we get better as we go. So once again, thanks for letting me do an update on the Civic Center.
Thank you, John. Let me say to this, the MRA committee, I don't think we need to meet the executive committee to give John permission to get quotes. I think we're fine with that. So the quotes that you asked for, John, just get those prepared. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Cruz?
I did have a question, Mr. Cruz.
Ms. McGee.
Just wanted to know, on your staffing, I know that we agreed to provide staffing for the Civic Center. Was that funded and then come out of your budget? Did we give additional dollars for that?
Well...
Mike?
So my understanding is when we did the budget last year, we had funding equal to the projected expenses combined with revenues and using carryover funds, which was what John discussed. So there was funding to meet those needs for this fiscal year. And I'm getting nods from my staff to put that budget together.
Thank you. Did that happen?
Yeah, I believe we're using rollover. And that's my only worry. I think that's why I'd be more of a broken record. A rollover originally was set to do events, and I think we're using that rollover to carry overhead expenses and other expenses that, again, we are covered on our budget. I think we balance our budget, but we're balancing with carryover funding.
Okay, this is supposed to be extra additional funds, right, that we agreed that we would fund, John, the staff that we said that we would give to the Civic Center? I just want to make sure that he gets those funds, Mike, and maybe not use so much money out of the rollover?
So as we prepare the budget for next year, we will have to appropriate additional funds to cover those costs.
Thank you, sir.
And we do anticipate that. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I don't think this requires any other action. Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Appreciate you very much. That meeting is adjourned. We will now call to order the meeting of the Muskogee City Council for February 27, 2023. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Jones.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Who's. Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Ms. Bodenhammer, can we entertain a motion to excuse both of our members who are not here but one motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll entertain a motion to excuse Dr. Who's and Ms. Boyati Craig.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Yes.
Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. We will now entertain the approval of the minutes for the Muskogee City Council session, January 23. The minutes appear not packing. Do we have corrections or a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second on those minutes. Further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. We will now consider the consent agenda, which consists of items numbered 1 through 11. Are there any items that need to be included in the regular agenda? Do we have approval on the consent agenda?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds. Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item number 12.
Consider approval of claims for all city departments, December 31, 2022, through February 3, 2023, or take other necessary action.
Yes, the purchasing committee did meet last week, and we approved all the claims, so I move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 12. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item number 13.
Hold a hearing, discuss, and take necessary action related to an appeal of the findings by the Uniform Building Code Appeals Board issued on December 28, 2022, that the structure located at 800 South 32nd Street is dilapidated and has become detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the general public, as to constitute a public nuisance and/or creates a fire hazard which is dangerous to other property.
We will now open the public hearing. Ms. Sweets.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, mayor and council. The city has been dealing with this structure for at least 10 years. I think all of you received the packets on Thursday. The size probably gives you an idea of how large this case is, over 150 pages. The structure has been vacant several years, off and on, probably 10 or more years, besides people entering the building illegally. The city has a record of 48 code enforcement cases, at least, dating back to 2003, including unsafe structure and dilapidated derelict property cases. There have been at least 104 police department calls for service going back to 2018, and 12 fire department incidents going back to 2020. At least two of those fire calls in 2013 and 2020 were major, two-alarm fires. Your packet did include a timeline of all of these events, as well as the case files, the fire department photos from the most recent fire in 2020, plus recent code enforcement photos we took of the property this month. This is the map. It's located on 32nd Street on the highway. There with all of the other hotels, similar use and zoning. You'll see the two green boxes. The frontage is the main property, but it does cover two legal description areas. Got a few photos from your packet. This one was after the 2020 fire. It has been cleaned up since then. This was an interior photo, just showing where boards had been taken off, the fire damage, the trees growing in and around. Now, we've got some recent photos from this month. That is the front side. Most of the windows in the front are covered with metal. Metal or wood, plywood on the front. This is the back and the pool area. It's two or three stories. There are probably half of the windows broken out on any given day, which is dangerous if you can get up to that level. This is the side view. Some of the HVAC equipment and just some dilapidated areas. It's another side of the building with the metal and broken out windows. So after all the code enforcement action was taken the last couple of years, and the property owners have failed to bring the property into compliance, this case was forwarded to the Public Nuisance Review Committee in November. They did vote unanimously to forward the case for demolition to the Uniform Building Code Appeals Board, which we call UBCAB. UBCAB met December 28. They agreed with PNRC and voted unanimously to proceed with demolition, declare it dilapidated. They denied the appeal from the owner. The property owner filed an appeal in January, and the city attorney did speak with them at the time to grant a one-month extension to get us to today. Staff does recommend upholding the finding of the UBCAB board issued December 28, 2022, deny the appeal, and allow the property to be placed on the demolition list. We do have code enforcement staff here if council has any questions.
We have one resident sign to speak to us tonight. Mark Hughes, 907. I'm sorry, Mark Hughes, if you will come to the microphone and give us your name and address.
And actually, mayor, if I can jump in here. The property owner, Mr. Sawyer, had an attorney, Mr. Colton Scott, prior to this, and he has retained new counsel this afternoon, Mr. Steve Money. I believe he is somewhere here today.
I will be prepared to let him make a remark after we have the person who has signed up to speak.
I will give Mr. Money the first steps, if you don't mind.
I don't mind that at all. Mr. Money, out of courtesy, I will allow you to come, give brief remarks, and make your request.
Thank you very much. My name is Steve Money. I represent Mr. Sawyer. I'm not really sure how to say his name. I've not met this man. I've spoken with him, and we've texted and emailed back and forth. That's the extent of my knowledge. This is all new news to me, so I apologize for being behind the curve. However, I would say that kind of is going to prove my point. I was not officially hired until this afternoon. We talked over the weekend, but I got hired this afternoon, and he let his other counsel go. All I am asking this evening is to table this issue. I know it's been going on for a long time now, and I know it's an important issue, and I'm not trying to downplay that. But I think out of a sense of fairness and due process, I'm just asking the council to table this just for one week, so I can get all the documents that he has, and which I assume is what you presented is what he has. And I'm just asking for a fair opportunity to get up to speed on this and then be prepared to address this whenever it's rescheduled.
Thank you, Mr. Money. Do we have any questions for Mr. Money?
Mr. Mayor, I did meet with Mr. Money, and just out of a cautious of, just out of caution for us as council, we've been through some wrongful demolition that has cost our city a lot of money. And, you know, I would like for us to consider giving Mr. Money an opportunity to review the case and see if there's anything in there that, you know, needs to be brought to our attention before we end up in a path that we have found ourselves, on a road we found ourselves in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Other comments before we close the public hearing? Thank you, Mr. Money.
Thank you.
Mr. Hughes, did that satisfy your comments? Thank you. We will now close the public hearing. I know Deputy Mayor's heart is in the right place. I think all of us have had these conversations regarding this property for several years now. I know that with all deference to Mr. Money, we've been friends and acquaintances, worked on several projects, but I will still maintain my position that the hotel needs to be torn down. Any comments from the council?
Is that your motion?
My motion will be to uphold staff's recommendations as presented.
My second.
We have a motion and a second to uphold staff's recommendations as presented. Any further comments from the council? Roll call.
So a vote yes is to vote that it be demolished, right?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
No.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
No.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
No.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes.
Four yeses and three nos.
Is that enough?
You've got to have five.
Okay. We have four yes and three no. We don't have enough to carry anything forward because we have two members absent on tonight. We will take this item up appropriately at the next available opportunity. Item number 14.
Consider approval of ordinance number 4187A to rezone the property addressed as 6,000 West Broadway, being more particularly described in the ordinance from R1, single-family residential, to PUD, planned unit development, and have approved authorized staff to revise the official zoning map of the city to reflect said change or take other necessary action.
Ms. Sweets.
Yes. Good evening, mayor. The property here is having its third public hearing, so we heard this two weeks ago, and I'll run through the PowerPoint again for our audience. The first two were on February 13. The applicant is Sensi Properties and Olson Incorporated, and they are requesting to rezone 6,000 West Broadway from R1, single-family residential, to a PUD, which is a planned unit development, and have approved authorized staff to revise the zoning map. This is the location. The proposed development contains a total of 6.8 acres. It's on the west edge of the city, near Highway 62, just on the north side and west of North 60th Street. The planned PUD is intended to accommodate all types of residential, I should say, the goal of a PUD is intended to accommodate all types of residential or commercial development, but staying compatible to surrounding land use areas. So we will show that on the map of what is around this property. So to go from R1 to R5 would allow a modular home community. The current use is a non-conforming mobile home park, so slightly different than the current use. They're proposing a single development area and would do a phased approach to remove the current mobile homes and redevelop it into a modular home park. That way, they're not affecting current tenants. They will have a Property Owners Association to maintain shared areas. Here is a proposed site plan. You can see the way that they are placing the units would be on smaller lots. The maximum quantity would be about 55, single-family dwellings. They're asking for a PUD because the setbacks would be slightly smaller than what we typically see on single lots for that use. So 17 feet instead of 25, and the lot area would be 3,600 square feet instead of 6,000. We have met and discussed drainage, design, sanitary sewer, public utilities with the applicant. They will meet all of the city's requirements, as well as street requirements. Current zoning, the star you see is R1. That's the location of the property. Mostly to the west and north is outside city limits. To the east, we have a mix of agriculture, and there is a church in the C1 area. Notices have been sent to all the surrounding property owners. Again, this is the third and final public hearing. The Public Works Committee and Planning and Zoning did support this and approve it at those hearings. Subdivision Committee approved it, and staff recommends approval as well.
Thank you, Ms. Sweets. What is the pleasure of this body?
On a modular home, is that not the same thing as a trailer?
No.
Okay.
Modular, no. It's a little different. It has the covered front and can't be moved.
Okay, okay, permanent.
Move for approval.
Yeah.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second on item number 14. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Jones?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes, the item passes. Thank you. Item number 15.
Consider approval of ordinance number 4188A on the application of American Bank Incorporated to rezone the property addressed as 219 South 32nd Street, being more particularly described in the ordinance from C1, local commercial, to C2, general commercial, and if approved, authorize staff to revise the official zoning map of the city to reflect said change or take other necessary action.
Ms. Sweetsie?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is a third and final public hearing for a simple rezoning. This is for a prior restaurant that is no longer in use. It's 219 South 32nd Street, so that's the west side of the highway. They would like to rezone from C1 to C2 because they have adjoining lots. So it's not necessarily required for what they are wanting to use the property for. It just simplifies to have their two lots together be the same zoning, which we support. This is the location. You'll see that they have a parking lot area and a building that will be torn down. So going from C1 to C2 will match their two properties. The hospital is on the west. The future use right now is intended to be a new plasma center, which is medical office building. This is permitted in the C2 zoning. It does meet the future land use requirements. Planning and zoning did vote to approve. This is a picture of the current building on the south side, and this is a proposed site plan. You'll see the parking on the north. Notices have been sent to all the property owners surrounding the property. All three hearings are listed on the screen. Public Works did vote to approve this on the 13th and staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Ms. Sweetsie. Do we have any questions or what is the pleasure of the body?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 15. Further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery?
I abstain.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Jones?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Abstain.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes. Thank you. Item passes. Item number 16.
Consider approval of ordinance number 4179A, an ordinance amending the City of Muskogee code of ordinances by amending Chapter 90, zoning, Article 23, specific use permits, Section 90-32-01 purposes, Section 90-23-02 conditions for approval, and Section 93-23-05 administration, adding repealer, severability, codification, and setting an effective date or take other necessary action.
Ms. Boldenhammer?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is my agenda item and this is a revision of ordinance number 4179A that will have us bring us into compliance with state law. It will also make these specific use permits easier for residents of Muskogee to obtain, more of a streamlined process. And it also will allow us to have not the fees in the ordinance itself, but in Schedule A to conform to the rest of our ordinances. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Boldenhammer or what's the pleasure of this body?
Move for approval?
A second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 16. Further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Jones?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes, item passes. Item number 17.
Consider approval of resolution number 2729, declaring certain items of personal property presently in the possession of the City of Muskogee to be surplus to the needs of the City of Muskogee and authorize the city manager to offer for sale or dispose of the same. All is per the attached list or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, Mayor, members of council. This is an item that went through committee two weeks ago. Won't belabor the point, but we have some old refuse trucks that we need to surplus. They're not in use anymore. Might be of value to another city, the City of Holdenville. They've made us a reasonable offer that is more than we usually get on a trade-in. So we would be happy to formalize this with a resolution, this item and the following, or just kind of cleanup items. We have to do a resolution to actually surplus the items that we've discussed in committee previous. So we'd be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, it's the same information that we've discussed in committee.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Do we have any questions for item number 17 or what's the pleasure of the body?
Move for approval?
A second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 17. Further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Jones?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes, item passes. Item number 18.
Consider approval to declare the former City Senior Center property located at 119 Spalding and adjacent lots as described further herein as surplus to the needs of the city, authorizing and appointing a committee consisting of Deputy Mayor Derek Reed, Counselor Tracy McGee, Counselor Shirley Hilton Flannery, and Counselor Perlin Boyati Craig to finalize, review, score, and recommend a transfer of said property through a request for proposal process or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, again, a formalizing item from committee. The committee at that time appointed these four members of the council to serve as a subcommittee to finalize, review, score, and recommend the transfer of said property through an RFP process. We do recommend approval of a motion to that effect and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any questions on item number 18 or what is the will of this body?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item 18. Further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Jones?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes, item passes. Item number 19.
Consider approval of resolution number 2730, declaring property located at 119 Spalding Boulevard and adjacent lots as surplus property and authorize transfer of said property through a request for proposal process or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, this is the resolution that kind of makes official what we did with the last item.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Miller? Do we have a motion?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 19. Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Jones?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes, item number 20.
Consider approval to authorize the city manager to execute an engagement letter with Hood and Associates Certified Public Accountants to perform review of financial statements and prepare audit report for fiscal year 2021 or take other necessary action.
Mr. Reed?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Currently, I have Crawford and Associates compiling the data for the fiscal year 21 audit. They are about completed, so I need to hire Hood and Associates to complete financial review and prepare the audit for your review. Be happy to answer any questions. We do recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Any questions on item number 20 or what's the pleasure of this body?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 20. Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Jones?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes, the item passes. Item number 21.
Receive report from staff on the status of the Smith Ferry Road project and land survey and take other necessary action.
Ms. Stout?
Yes, I've gotten several questions over the last couple of weeks about this project and the surveying being done with property owners. And so we just asked staff to put this on the agenda to give everybody an update so everybody could be aware of what was the progress that was going on. Mr. Miller?
Yes, I've got, we have our public work staff. Avery is going to take the lead, I think, on our presentation. We have our engineer on the project here to answer questions as well. We are in the design phase, but this is a good time to get a reminder that we've started this project, where we are now and where we're headed.
Thank you.
All right, so like Mr. Miller said, this is a reminder of where we stand and what we're going to be doing. So first, we'll start by looking at the scope. Currently, Smith Ferry Road is a two-lane asphalt street with borrowed ditches for stormwater drainage. And historically, these areas have had less than adequate drainage, causing issues for residents and for traffic and for our road surface. So this project aims to widen the street to a three-lane, one eastbound lane, one westbound lane, and one center turn lane. And we are also getting a $4.5 million contribution from the Muskogee Creek Nation for this. And the total length of the project is one mile on Smith Ferry from Gulick to Main Street, which is shown here. And you'll note that blue box right there is denoting the detention pond that we'll talk about here briefly. So first, we'll talk about stormwater. Poor drainage is an inconvenience to residents, detrimental to the road's driving surface and base, and if severe enough, can present hazards. This project will improve drainage along Smith Ferry using improved ditches and underground stormwater piping. The drainage improvement should improve the standing water along Smith Ferry Road, and a dry detention basin will be constructed south of Smith Ferry Road and east of Orchard Parkway. So here is a engineer drawing of the detention pond. And next, we'll move on to roadwork. So it has yet to be determined the driving surface of the road, but it will either be asphalt or concrete. The new street will be a three-lane, as we discussed earlier, and the new street will have curb and gutter to accommodate the new stormwater system. Will be one center lane mile of new street with an eight-foot sidewalk. So here's a description or a picture, rather, of what the street will look like upon completion. The left side of the screen is north, so you'll see the sidewalk and then the three driving lanes. Here is a typical drawing for how the street will be constructed. And next, we'll move to utility relocation. So in order to allow for construction for the road and the stormwater improvements, most of the existing utilities within the right-of-way will need to be relocated to the proposed right-of-way. The city does this so that utilities are not under the roadway when repairs are needed, so that way we don't have to disturb the driving surface or traffic. So let's talk about what utilities are. The city has utilities, which are water sanitary sewer and storm sewer, and then non-city-owned utilities are fiber, gas, electric, phone lines, internet, et cetera. So when you drive down Smith Ferry right now across the street from Hilldale School, you'll see several different colors of flags in the right-of-way, and those are marking the utilities. So the utility companies come out and they put those in the ground to notate where their lines are underneath the surface. So we'll talk about how we get to the end of the project. So first, we procure engineering and we have gotten Olson to be our engineers for the project. And they survey the right, they survey the area to know where the final product will be. So that includes where the street will be, where the right-of-way will be, and where the utilities will lie in that right-of-way. They will develop a set of plans officially, which Clayton will touch on. Clayton, our engineer, is here with us and he's going to help answer any questions here at the end of this presentation. So then, the city will work through Olson to acquire right-of-way from the homeowners and residents, begin construction of the detention pond and establish flow to the pond, move the utilities, pipe the water underground, and begin roadway construction. So right-of-way acquisition. Olson's team will meet with the property owners to acquire the right-of-way. The property will have, the property owner will have the right to a fair negotiation. The properties will be appraised prior to an offer being made, and offers will be made based on the appraiser's opinion of fair market value. So let's talk about what right-of-way is. All streets in the City of Muskogee have right-of-way associated with them. This is a common practice in nearly all cities. This exists so that there is an area where the city and the utility companies can access the utilities without having to enter private property or house utilities under the road. So there's survey stakes out there currently. And as Ms. Stout alluded to, so we'll review what a survey is and what that entails. A land survey is used to map out the shape of the boundaries of a parcel of land, and it is a drawing that represents the dimensions of a parcel of land. A topographic survey represents the physical features, utilities, drainage structures, pavement, and ground elevation that are on the parcel of land. And those are the stakes that you see out there. Those are marking for the survey. So that's what they look like. And then a timeline for completion. Clayton will touch on that a little bit at the end of this. This project will be a fairly long one. It takes a long time to acquire right-of-way and build streets. Right-of-way acquisition does take time. You have to find the owners. And then there's a negotiation process to make sure everyone is getting a fair market value. Utility movement takes cooperation between the city and the utility companies, as well as actual movement of the lines. And construction takes time. Supply issues are more prevalent than ever and construction is also weather-dependent. So those are things just to be aware of before the project starts. And we also want to say a special thank you to the Muskogee Creek Nation for their financial contribution to this project.
Thank you. The gentleman from Olson is now recognized.
Hello, Clayton Christie with Olson.
Thank you.
And I'm here to answer questions.
Yeah, Clayton, can you give us just a little bit more of an idea of a timeline? We've kind of touched on it, but you can walk us through what's next and then what, you know, how that plays out over the coming weeks and months and years.
Sure. So as Avery told you, we are in the right-of-way acquisition phase. We are projecting this to last most of the rest of this year into the fall for sure. At that point, the right-of-way will be cleared where utilities could then relocate to the perimeter of the project. And then we would be working with the Public Works Department to establish a bid date, hopefully sometime next year. We also have to work with utilities to determine how much time they will need to relocate. So that's, I know that's not a definitive answer, but that's kind of the stage we're at in this type of major project for a street.
So may I add that we are currently doing some work on this project?
Yes.
We do. You want to go ahead?
Yes, sorry. So there, Avery discussed it. There's kind of two phases to this project. The detention portion of it, which we're doing first in order to get the drainage taken care of to prevent downstream, any downstream drainage issues, knowing that there are already flooding issues downstream of this. So we want to get those taken care of first. There's one project that has already been bid and the contractor has started. There just isn't any work in the field yet. He's procuring materials for that project. That will occur on the Orchard Parkway area and extend east-west behind some houses in Orchard Parkway. We will be bidding soon, the detention pond that Avery showed, that hopefully for construction starting sometime this summer. We have two more easements to go on that one. So hopefully negotiations will go well on this.
Thank you. We have two residents signed to speak to us tonight on this item. May Kirk, I'm going to ask if you would like to please come to the microphone, give us your name and your address, and you'll have five minutes.
Mayor, she's passing on speaking.
She's passing on speaking. Thank you. Norma J. Murray, if you'd like, you please come to the microphone, give us your name and your address, and you'll have five minutes.
I'm Norma J. Murray, and I've lived on, at 240 East Smith Ferry Road, which is next door to the football parking lot. And I've lived there, will be 51 years in March. I've watched a lot of changes, and this time I'm going to be very affected by it. So I'm, I'm, I'm ready, I'm going to have to learn a lot, and I'll, and I'm expecting everyone to give me some help so that, you know, and it sounds good when it says we want to make sure you get a fair, you know, get dealt with fairly. So I just wanted to just say hello and thank you very much for all of your hard work.
And ma'am, somebody from staff will come out and visit with you on this project.
Ms. Murray, the Public Works Director?
Somebody from our staff will come out and assist you with that and make sure that you understand.
I've been there 51 years and my understanding, I need to know what I've done for improvements and all that. So, and I just found this out.
So we'll be glad to be out there and explain the process and show you where the road's going to go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, Ms. Murray. Ms. Stout?
I appreciate staff giving us an update tonight, and we can move on.
Sir, you have to be signed up. I'm so sorry. But we will make arrangements for staff to speak to you right after this meeting. Thank you so much.
Mayor, if I may, Superintendent Pocket is here, and I just want to thank him for being here and his cooperation on this project. It's been very helpful to work in partnership with Hilldale. I can't say enough good things about him and the school district is trying to make this happen, as well as our partners with Creek Nation. So thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Item number 22.
Consider approval of changes made to Council Policy 10-3, honorary street name sign policy or take other necessary action.
Mr. Rigney?
The honorary street name policy needs a little bit of update due to personnel changes over time and position changes. So that's one of the changes that we have proposed in the updated version, as well as removing the payment requirements.
as well as removing the payment requirements for the honorary street name. Several of them have been waived in the past, and so to keep up with current practices, we took that out of the policy. That's the conclusion of the changes.
Thank you, Mr. Rigney. I know my pleasure would be that we leave the fees intact. My fear is that we'll have an overabundance of those honorary street markers going up everywhere. And the intention of those markers is to pay special tribute to certain individuals of our community who've had, I would say, an enormous impact on the quality of life for the city of Muskogee. My only concern is that if we waive the fee, we'll get a free-for-all. So I would probably be amenable to accept all of the recommendations except the fee waiver. That would be my pleasure.
If you would make that motion, I voted against it last week, and that was my sentiments exactly.
So I think... Thank you, Deputy Mary. I think an appropriate motion would be to accept the recommendations provided by staff except for the removal of the fee for the subject matter.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number... 22. Further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, thank you. Item number 23.
Consider approval of an amendment to the contract between the city of Muskogee and Oki Safety Consulting to increase the contract value, or take other necessary action. Did I...
23. I'm sorry.
If I can go back to 22, we didn't state whether or not the motion passed.
It passed.
Okay.
Thank you, I'm so sorry.
How about if I read 23?
My vision's impaired.
Consider approval to reject the bids from the sole contractor on the housing rehabilitation program for the repair of 13 dwellings, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Sweetsie.
Good evening again, Mayor. The Planning Department received bids from one bidder in January, and this is for the housing rehabilitation program. This is a five-year program. This is Zone 10, Area 10, for these houses. We plan to rehab 13 dwellings. However, there was a couple of missing items from the one sole bid we received, so we'd like to recommend rejecting the one bid and rebid it this week for the proper time, and then bring back an award in late March.
Thank you, Ms. Sweetsie. What's the pleasure of the body? Do we have any questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
May I ask who was the bidder?
Is that allowed?
Technically, we don't want to allow that yet because we're just rejecting the one bid, and then we don't want to give an unfair advantage or unfair competition, so...
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes, it's to reject. Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item number 24.
Consider approval of an amendment to the contract between the city of Muskogee and Oki Safety Consulting to increase the contract value, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Sweetsie.
Thank you, Mayor. Oki Safety Consulting began its contract with the city in September of 22. They assist the Planning Department with outside plan reviews and inspections, mostly on our larger projects such as the hospital. They had an original contract amount not to exceed $25,000, which we have already approached. So due to the growing number and the size of the projects happening, which is a great problem to have, we need to increase their not-to-exceed price. We recommend mending that to $150,000, which sounds high, but knowing that we base these fees, both what they charge us and what we charge projects is by the square foot, and the hospital is very large, this will balance out with revenue. And so we do recommend approval, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sweetsie. Do we have any questions on that item?
Yes, Mayor, can let me recognize.
Yes, ma'am.
So in this increase, are you saying only on big projects or the square foot amount being a high number? Is that what we're saying?
Can you repeat that?
Are we saying that you want to increase this to $150,000 for big projects only?
This is just to increase the contract for Oki Safety. It's not increasing any fees that we charge customers.
Okay.
We have permits coming in. Just a little background on the hospital. They're doing phases, so they have different phases of the project. It will take several, two or three years. And so each of those could be $10,000, $20,000, $30,000, $50,000 in permits, which is common for a project this size. So those adding up in one fiscal year is raising the contract fee.
Okay, thank you.
To add to Ms. McGee's question, I think that I'm understanding this correctly, that because of what's going on with the number or the volume of projects, we need to be certain that we are in a situation with our vendor to be certain that we cover costs so that we don't have to keep coming back to council.
Correct.
Okay. I understand. Thank you. Further discussion? Questions? Motion?
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed. Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item passes. Item number 25.
Receive an update on the proposed Grandview Park redevelopment project. Discuss next steps and project timeline, and take other necessary action.
Mr. Wilkerson.
Mayor and council members, City Manager Miller asked that I come to you and bring you a quick update about our project.
And Mark, if I may interrupt, I need to give credit. Councilor Stout also asked for us to put this agenda together, and I do want to thank her for this. Sorry to interrupt, Mark.
No problem.
Thank you.
So at this point, of course, I gave a background of the project. If everybody's familiar, where the Grandview project is at behind the Hilldale Elementary School, it's primarily two old softball fields that we are repurposing. We're redesigning kind of a master plan with a theme of a bike park-type theme, off-road cycling trails, and an adventure-type playground. So a planning design group in Tulsa was hired as a design consultant. They teamed up with a company out of Missouri who specializes in bike parks, and they are now working on our project. Just real quickly to show you a few slides. Where's that? Go back, sorry. This is our master plan. It's in your packet, I believe. If you want to take a closer look, it's kind of hard to see in this visual. But this is the perimeter of the outline of the park. The school would be to the north or to the top of the page, the two white roof buildings. The parking lot is existing that serviced the old softball fields. But basically, we got two grants from the state, and one of them was a trail grant. So there are certain things that we can do with that money. So we have to do the trails, and there's paved trails, and there's primitive trails. So in this picture, the white line resembles the paved trails, the paved walking trails. And the red line will resemble a primitive trail that will go into the woods and come back out into the park. Important, though, is the connection, the connectivity to this project is going to connect. Now, there's a dotted black line that's going up to the north towards the school. That's to connect to the overpass that goes over Peak Boulevard, so that we make a safe pedestrian access from the neighborhood there from the north to the school, to the park. And then actually, what we're hopeful to doing is you see a black dotted line on the bottom of the page through the woods there. That takes you to the golf course and hopefully to the community to the south, the neighborhood to the south, making access for them to the park and to the school. And then what you don't see is up to the top right corner, that sidewalk also takes you up to where the fire station. If you're familiar with it, there's a fire station that's on Peak Boulevard out there. So even the firemen will be able to access the park. Then that pie-shaped thing there right in the middle, that will be the playground. Again, it's a non-traditional playground. It'll be a combination of some custom stick-built things. We've tasked the consultant to design something where we can repurpose the wood utility poles from the light structures out there. And so there's some examples of that in here, and then there's some equipment that will be purchased. But it'll be like something that we don't have in Muskogee. So it'd be kind of a destination-themed park. In that corner to the west, this area will be the bike park amenities. So you can see there's a place for what they call a skills trail loop, a pump track, and a bicycle playground, and some examples of that. They're just photos here. These are of other projects that this company has done. It's designed as more for an introductory to mountain biking, so for kids and young families. But again, still could be adults, young adults, that are wanting to experimenting. This is an example of the primitive trails and the bike areas that can be built in the open areas or in the woods and the combination. You see the young person there with the little guy with his bike. It's trying to kind of introduce. Very, very popular, and we do not have that. And so we're very looking forward to it very much. Our budget is, right now, is $1.26 million. Our timeline is that they're working on the construction drawings at this time. We hope that they're done in May. We'll be out to bid at the end of May, 1st of June, hopefully bringing to you a contract to award in July, and then getting underway with the construction. Hopefully, we can complete it by the end of the year.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkerson. Ms. Stout?
Thank you, Mark. We appreciate your update.
Mr. Mayor, one other thing I'd like to point out. Part of that $1.26, $1.2-something million budget is going to be a request coming at a future date from the city matching grant fund. We've got two federal, state and federal grants, but we've not requested money in the past for those grants to have a match, for us to be able to get to that number and get to this scope of the project. We're going to request those. Again, not asking for that today, but just a heads up that that will be coming from a request from the matching grant fund.
Thank you.
Thank you. The story on that, too, you know, we've been working on this for a long time, and so our budget was created pre-COVID. And so when we got the results from what we thought we wanted to do, the price was way more. I mean, actually, we could do another, like a $2.5 million here. It's in the conceptual design, but we're going to try to get that $1.26 million done. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkerson. Item number 26.
Consider approval of a contract renewal with Midwest Employers Casualty Company for excess workers' compensation insurance in the amount of $97,753, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Bowden-Hammer.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, this is my agenda item. It's time for our renewal of our workers' compensation insurance policy. This policy covers above and beyond what we cover as a self-insured city. So we are self-insured for workers' compensation claims. And then in the event that we have, say, a lifetime injury or something that creates additional cost to the city beyond what we, the budget that we maintain, this policy will come in, and it will cover those excess expenses, should they occur. Last year's policy was $100,046. This year, it has gone down to $97,753. We have had a reduction in claims, even though medical bills have gone up. So I would recommend approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Bowdenham, or what's the pleasure of the body?
Move for approval.
A second.
We have a motion and a second on that item. Further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. The item passes. Item number 27.
Consider approval of a Sourcewell purchase from RP Power for Kohler Emergency Generator Set and Automatic Transfer Switch for use at lift station nine in the amount of $88,450.10, or take other necessary action.
My note says Avery and Jeff, but I would prefer that Mr. Stewart would acknowledge his staff to make presentations as appropriate.
I think Mr. Stewart's going to make the presentation.
Thank you.
So as you can see in the picture there, that is the lift station nine. And the generator to the left of it is what is inoperative. That is a backup generator. This has OG&E power, and a backup generator only needs to be put into service when we have a power loss. If we have a power loss now, we simply have to put in a bypass line and push that sewage over to another manhole. But that's a lot of work and a lot of effort. So we do need a backup generator. Lead time on the one that we're looking at is 62 weeks, so it's quite a ways out. And again, the price on this is $88,450.10. This will come out of the MMA fund. Lift station nine is, if you drive on 11th Street and you go past the frontage road that goes to Walmart, it's back there, closer to the county line. This is from Sourcewell, which is a cooperative purchasing agreement, so it is appropriate for our purchasing. And we do recommend approval. I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Do we have any questions on item number 27, or what's the will of the body?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 27. Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number 28.
Consider approval to award bids to Citywide in the amount of $1,050 per mow for the detention pond mowing project within the city of Muskogee, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes, so first thing I want to point out is that Citywide is actually the company name. That kind of threw me when I first saw that, but that is the company name. I usually would have Jason Green here to help present this item, but Jason is at the Regional Livestock Show with his children, and I'm very proud he's over there. He has a great time doing that. So Avery has worked diligently with Jason to put this together. So Avery is going to do the presentation for you, and I'm here to assist him with any questions.
Thank you.
So laying in your places before this meeting were some maps. Those will be for the remainder of the mowing presentations. This item specifically is on the detention ponds. And those detention ponds are the Elliott Street Pond and the Chandler Road Pond. The Chandler Road Pond is behind Walmart, and the Elliott Pond is right there on Elliott and David Lane in that area. These are...
Let me correct that. The Chandler Pond is actually over behind McDonald's on Chandler.
Sorry. Thank you. These went back out to bid to get more competitive pricing, and we were a little bit different in the way we packaged them. And that goal was accomplished. These bids were lower than the bids we received last year, and staff does recommend approval.
Thank you.
Oh, and the funding for this, since it is detention pond, it does come from the Stormwater Fund.
Thank you. Further discussion? Do we have a motion, or what is the pleasure of the body?
Move for approval.
A second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 28. Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number 29.
Consider approval to award bids to Avery Lawn in the amount of $1,688 per mow for all locations for mowing projects within the city of Muskogee for Highway 69, Main Street, East Oak Mulgy, and Spalding Medians, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Again, Mr. Rigney's going to present this. This is one of the areas that he does actually supervise, so he's a very...
Mr. Rigney.
So this is for the 69 Highway Medians, and only the medians there. So this is for the 69 highway medians, and only the medians there. We mow the right-of-way. But the medians are very dangerous to mow, so we contract that out. It is for the Main Street medians, the East Oak Mulgy medians, and the Spalding medians. Same story as the last item. We did put this out to bid again this year, and it was much more competitive, and the bids did come in lower. And this is paid out of the street and alley fund since it is medians, and staff does recommend approval.
Thank you. Any questions on item number 29? What is the pleasure of this body?
Move for approval.
A second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 29. Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number 30.
Consider approval of recommendation from Holloway Updike and Bellin for the best bid of a replacement high-service pump at the water treatment plant to Evans Enterprises in the amount of $256,959.37, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes, Mayor, this is, the bid that we have is not the lowest. It's actually about $1,500 more. But it will actually be a better bid. It will be the best bid because of the installation method. This can fit through the roof just the way the old one was put in there. It's got the same footprint that the old one had. So the installation will be much easier and less expensive. This high-service pump does have a 30 to 35-week lead. Steve Tolliver from Hub actually made the recommendation that we go with this bid as the best bid, and I put that in your packet so that you could read his recommendation. The high-service pump is used when we have to peak demand, in that we have to kick the pumps in out there. And I did have pictures of the existing high-service pump in your packet. Our superintendent, Keith Lumpkin, is here if there's any technical questions to answer. But we do recommend approval. And again, this is $256,959.37, and this will be an MMA-funded project. Happy to answer any questions. And again, Mr. Lumpkin's here for the more technical ones.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from this body? Then what is this body's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 30. Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number 31.
Consider approval to award bids to Lawn Stars in the amount of $2,250 per month for all locations for the mowing project, which includes the Health Department Ditch, Broadway and G Street, and Haskell Boulevard, all within the city of Muskogee, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes, Mr. Rigney's going to handle this one, too. But I will tell you, before he does, the one over there by the park across from the health center is one we plan to pipe. So we've got this on the bid, just in case we don't get it done and the mowing season has started. But we're trying to get that ditch with the stormwater underground so it can be mowed easier by the park crews when they mow the park.
Mr. Rigney.
So these are the drainage ditches and basins, or drainage ditches and the areas that they flow to. And these were put out to bid again for a more competitive bid, and that was accomplished again. This bid is lower than last year's. And this is drainage ditches, so it's paid out of stormwater as well, and staff does recommend approval.
Thank you. Any questions from this body? Then what is its pleasure?
Move for approval.
A second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 30.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one. Thank you. Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number 32.
Consider approval of the negotiation and possible execution of an agreement between the city of Muskogee and Bear Down Pro Rodeo LLC to produce the annual rodeo for 2023 at the Hat Box Complex as approved by council on July 11, 2022, and provide direction to staff regarding this event, as well as identification of appropriate funding, or take other necessary action.
Let me take this opportunity to say on all of the next following items, I want to personally commend Counselor Stout for her fervor in being certain that we do what we can to provide what we need to do to our residents, to always be in a position to give back to them. Counselor Stout can be the most fervored person, but she also has the most tender heart. And so I want to take this opportunity to thank her for being so patient in dealing with us with these items. I'll just make brief comments and then turn the floor over to her. Last year, we had a wonderful opportunity during our 150th anniversary to celebrate Muskogee in a way by providing a rodeo. And the residents, by their desire, and they deserve to have one, had said that they enjoyed the event so much that they had hoped that we would do what we could to provide this annually. And so it gives a good opportunity for our residents to come together outside of an anniversary marker so that we can be in a position as a council to say that we always, when we can, give back to our community. So having said that, I'm going to turn this over to Counselor Stout to make comments and whatever motion is necessary.
Like Mayor Coleman said, you know, everybody enjoyed the rodeo last year and approached us about doing it on an annual basis. So at this time, we would like to make a motion to form an advisory committee composed of Mayor Coleman, Counselor Stout, and Counselor Morgan to advise staff to hold a 2023 rodeo free to the public and further authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement with Bear Down Pro Rodeo and authorizing the appropriate expenditures from the 23-24 budget.
Second. Do we have any discussion on that item? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Thank you. Item number 33.
Provide direction to staff related to hosting an annual gala celebration at the Muskogee Civic Center and take other necessary action.
Last year, when we had our Unity Gala, it was another give-back program as part of the 150th anniversary. In addition to thanking Counselor Stout for her assistance, I also want to thank Deputy Mayor Reed because he worked very hard to be certain that the entertainment was coordinated in a way that it was a grand event. It was very well done, very well put together. And having said that, we look forward to another give-back to our community on an annual basis where we can come together. Last year, one of the things that I remember the most was a gentleman who called and asked me what he should wear to the gala. And he said that he and his wife had had some challenges. They would not be the most well-dressed person, but could they attend? And that just did something to my psyche, seeing him and his wife there and enjoying Muskogee at an event that they had not previously had the opportunity to attend. And that just did wonders for me to be able to see that. We hope to expand that offering again with the annual gala to the residents of our community. And having said that, I will turn this over to my colleague, Counselor Stout, for further comments and whatever motion is necessary.
Yes. So kind of just the same thing, you know, with the galas we had with the rodeo. We had such a great turnout and by the public, and so we want to do that again. So I'm doing a motion in the form of a form of advisory committee composed of Mayor Coleman, Counselor Stout, and Counselor McGee to advise staff to hold an annual gala free to the public, furthering to authorizing appropriate funding in the 24 budget for said gala.
Second. Thank you. We'll take Ms. McGee as a second. Further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, thank you. Item number 34 is, item number three passes.
Discuss ways to facilitate and incentivize league play and tournaments for the Muskogee Youth Baseball League at the Hat Box Sports Complex for 2023, and provide direction to staff.
One of the things that has been clear to me over the years I've been on the council is that my colleague, Counselor Stout, is in love with children and young people. And we want to be certain that we have an opportunity to do what we can to assist them and their families and their coaches with their leagues as we provide more offerings at the Hat Box Arena. We have been meeting with the coaches. We want to keep our word to those families to be certain that we do what we can to enhance their quality of life. And having said that, I will turn that over to Ms. Stout for further comments and a motion after we have the one person that has signed up to speak. But we will hear Ms. Stout at this time.
Yes, we've had, you know, it's always great to see our community involved in wanting to help and promote and increase the participations with, especially with our kids out at Hat Box and with the baseball league. So it's been, you know, we are happy to be able to help them out and to kind of help them and see how we can grow our little league baseball. So I'll turn that floor back over to you. So we're going to have...
Thank you, ma'am. We have one person assigned to speak to this item. Jimmy Stinson, if you'll come to the microphone and give us your name and your address. And you will have five minutes.
My name's Jimmy Stinson, 4430 Elwell Road, Muskogee. Mayor, Council, thank you for what you do. It takes a lot of effort for you guys. I appreciate every one of you. I am a lifelong resident of Muskogee. I own a business here. I've owned it for 30 years. I've been involved with baseball and softball. Started out as playing both sports, played football, umpired both at the little league level, high school level, and the collegiate level. I've also been past league director for Muskogee Knothole Baseball back in the early 90s. I am currently the league director for Green Country Girls Softball Association. We had our coaches meeting last Thursday. We had 23 teams that signed up at our meeting Thursday. We've also had others that have contacted us to play in our league this spring. I appreciate the council being interested in youth sports, but I would like to mention also that it's not just the baseball league that plays at Hat Box. We also have a lot of young girls that play at Hat Box, and we would like to see a little attention from the council there also. We have, in the past, had tournaments. At one time, on the baseball side, when I was league director there, we had 108 teams in the spring season. In the on the softball side, the first year I was league director, we only had 30 teams. We had built that up to about 45, and then COVID hit, went way down. We're missing opportunities by not having tournaments regularly at Hat Box. What the city has done in the past, in the past, it was the individual leagues that were responsible for concessions, groundskeeping, everything involved with Hat Box. At one point, the city took that over, and it didn't work out so well. Some of you may not remember, SFM was brought in from Florida to manage our fields. Well, that didn't work out so well either, so now the city has brought it back. What would be wrong with doing the same thing like you did with SFM on a five-year plan with Muskogee Youth Baseball and with Green Country Girls Softball? One thing about Green Country Girls Softball is we are a 501(c)(3) organization. We have to be accountable. And being a nonprofit, you can't make money on the thing. Our main goal is to be out there for those kids. And we know these kids need something to do. They need to have their, those little hands have to be doing something. Idle hands are the devil's workshop. So if we can keep them busy doing something, it's better for all of us. Anyway, again, thank you for what you do. Appreciate it.
Ms. Stinson, let me also say that I'm certain that Counselor Stout now would be happy to have further conversations with you. If you will reach out to Judy in the city manager's office, I'll give you the number if you think you'll remember it. If not...
I'll get it from you after the meeting.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you so much, sir. Ms. Stout?
Okay. I will go ahead and do our motion. I motion to authorize the city manager to provide startup funding for the Muskogee Youth Baseball to cover all necessary required expenses for the first year of operations with the league, to use those funds to pay the customary operational and required expenses for the leagues and Hat Box Sports Complex in preparation to be ready to operate independently.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 34. Further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, thank you. The item passes. We have no resident signed to speak to us tonight. You can clap. That's okay. We like, we get booed sometimes, but clapping is good, too.
I'm not here to speak on that, but I did everything he said.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you.
As far as I played, I umpired not to an extent, but I also had children that played and a girl that was really good. And it's, the kids earn more.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Item number 35.
Consider an executive session to discuss and take action on the following. A pursuant to Section 307b1, Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the employment and evaluate the performance of Municipal Judge Tony Bradley Smith, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. B pursuant to Section 307b4, Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim of C. B. Abel, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. C pursuant to Section 307b4, Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim of John David Alexander, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. D pursuant to Section 307b4, Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim of Larry Fennell, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. E pursuant to Section 307b4, Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim of Dustin Wisdom, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. F pursuant to Section 307b4, Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim of Jacob Schiller, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session.
Thank you. Katrina, do we need to discuss the item A before we call for a motion?
Yes, actually, we're going to defer that item, and we'll probably take no action on that. And the same thing for number F. At this time, we would, yeah, we need to go ahead and defer that item also.
Okay. So we're going to scratch those two items. So besides that, we are looking for a motion to go into executive session at this time.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes. We are considered in executive session. Those who are not party, could you please excuse us at this time? We will now reconvene from executive session. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Jones.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Bowdenhammer?
Thank you, Mayor.
Item B.
Pursuant to 37b, Title 25, council did convene an executive session to discuss 35b, the workers' compensation claim of C. B. Abel. Direction was given to staff regarding And we need a motion to approve the settlement discussed in executive session.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item 35b. Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item C.
Thank you, Mayor. On item C pursuant to Section 307b4, Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, we, council did convene an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim of John David Alexander. We do need a motion regarding the action taken in executive session.
Do we have a motion of that effect?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item C. Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Yes, the item passes. Item D.
Thank you, Mayor. Pursuant to Section 307b4, Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, council did convene an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim of Larry Fennel. Direction was given to staff, and we do need an appropriate motion regarding that action.
Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item D. Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.